Come on, Andy, it's a team. Craig, I'm sorry, it's Andy.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers, Rudy Escalante with the Police Department. It's an honor and a privilege to introduce a couple of our finest. One of our newest officers is Brittany Long. Brittany comes to us from Gunnison, Colorado. She's an Aptos resident and has almost a year's experience in police work here in California. And so, we're excited to have her here. And she's got an Associate's Degree in Science, and so, she's in the training program. And her training officer is Craig Evans to her left. Craig has been with the department since 2011. Craig came to us in 2008 from the San Jose Police Department. He covers many assignments right now. He oversees the red light program, he's a field training officer, he's been the association president as well. He's going to the Detective Bureau. He's been riding motorcycles for the last couple of years, and he has a Master's Degree as well. So, anyway, I just wanted to make sure we introduced our officers to you and welcome Brittany Long to the Police Department.
Thank you, welcome Brittany. Thank you both for what you do, okay? Okay, next, we have a presentation for Al Carlson for his service to the city. Come on up, Al. Right up here in the front. This is your 15 minutes of fame, Al, but it's only going to last about two or three minutes, okay?
Okay.
What we have here, Alfred Carlson, you served on the Advisory Council for the Area Aging, Agency of Aging in Santa Cruz and San Bernardino County for, I'm going to call it three years. It's a couple of months shy, but let's call it three years. And I was told you prior to this, you served on the Finance Committee?
Eight years.
For eight years. So, I think you've made your contribution to the city of Capitola, so, round the applause. Thank you very much. We're going to give you this, and now you're going to have a little bit more spare time, maybe do some more fishing. What do you think?
Very good, thank you.
Do you want to say some words?
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
Look over here at the camera. Okay, yeah, I was really happy to serve on this committee. It's a great committee. And as you know, the seniors are a great need in Capitola. There's a lot of them. Bernie Sanders is right, the disparity in income is getting greater all the time, and seniors are at the bottom. So, they need a lot of help. Stephanie is going to take over my job, and I think she'll do great. Thank you.
Thank you for supporting the seniors, Al. Appreciate it.
We expect a fish report every two weeks.
Okay, next, we, it's our privilege to have Senator Mark Stone here who's going to give us a legislative session wrap-up. Come on up, Mark, and tell us what's going on.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers. Always happy to come and talk to the council, get an idea of what you're interested in, and give you a bit of a wrap-up of what happened in Sacramento over the last year, and a little preview of kind of things we're looking at for this next year. As you know, last year was, you had, I think, the fourth year in a row where we had to actually balance budget in the state of California, and growing surpluses. And thanks to the voters, year ago last November, we put in a rainy day fund. We've been building that into the state budget, but now it will be guaranteed to be a part of the budgeting exercise moving forward. And that is to make sure that we are taking in and identifying excess revenues and holding on to them, using them to pay down some debts, some long-term obligations. We've been managing some of those obligations over the last number of years, but holding back money to make sure that as the economy turns down, which it will, that we're not having such vicious cycles of the ups and downs and significant cuts to the programs over the years that we have seen the last decade or so. So, we've been having an eye on investments and an eye on making sure that we're putting together programs that are really having an effect for Californians. For example, last year, we were able to build into the budget $380 million for an earned income tax credit. And that's a tax credit to the poorest California working families. And in conjunction with the federal tax credit, it means families who qualify can get back up to $7,000 in a year, which is a significant benefit. One of the best ways we know of to lift people out of poverty and really drive the economy in the communities that are not seeing the recovery across California. Some sectors, we are seeing recovery. Silicon Valley is doing just fine, thank you. But other places, the Central Valley, East LA, places close by here, Salinas, other areas are really struggling some. And to be able to put that money into people's pockets when they spend in the community is the biggest economic driver that we can do. So, we're able to do some things like that. In my ledge packet, of course, as you know, I've been very interested in the foster care system, and I put together a bill last year, working very closely with the administration. Single biggest change in the foster care system in a long time, and that's moving counties away from group homes, which fortunately, we don't do as much around here as other counties do, but into more individualized care. Wraparound services, mental health services, services up front when those kids first touch the system, as opposed to towards the back end as they're struggling along. So, that's turning the model on its year, about a three-year implementation. I'm doing a bill this year that will be an implementation bill, kind of clean up some of the things we've learned from last year, and we'll continue that process, working very closely with stakeholders and with the Department of Social Services at the state to make sure that we're implementing it really well. So, we're able to do some very good things, I think. Some things we did not do very well last year, and I know that it's important to you, around the two special sessions that were called, one on transportation and one on how we deliver the healthcare system in California, the managed care organizations tax. That was a tax that was put in place a number of years ago at the request of the managed care organizations providers, and that expires next November. If we do not replace that tax, if we do not continue that system, that's a $1.3 billion hole in the state budget, because we draw down that much in federal dollars to help the delivery system. We're very close to a vote on that. We should be taking the vote on Monday to put that in place. That's good news. There's some trade-offs. It's, in a lot of ways, it's actually a tax reduction, given where we stand currently with what that tax represents, and there's some other corporate income tax benefits that come along with it, but really, it's very, very good for California. The other place that we failed last year, and we're still struggling with, is the transportation measure. There was a special session that was created to raise revenues, to restructure how we receive revenues, because as you know, the gas tax is a declining revenue source. So, we're trying to look at different ways that we can bring revenues in to address failing infrastructure across California. We were not able to strike a deal last year, unfortunately, and it was bad politics. We're still a little far apart in the Assembly Plan, the Senate Plan, Governor's Plan, but we're coming close together. And now that the managed care organization piece should be dealt with on Monday, we can renew our focus on the transportation piece and get some dollars down locally. That in connection with, I know there's conversations in Santa Cruz County about becoming a self-help county and passing a transportation tax here. If we can do that and become a self-help county, that will make more federal and state dollars available under these mechanisms to our local jurisdictions to help you with your transportation needs. So, I'm hopeful we'll be able to strike that deal as we move forward. Very frustrated from last year, the politics around the climate change bills, politics around some of the other things that were going on, the tobacco tax and the tobacco legislation that we had were kind of frustrating and distractions to the work that we really needed to get done. So, I'm hopeful we'll make the deals that we need to around that. Other areas that I'm working on, making some pretty good strides, I think, the prison reform area, where we're making the state system that much more responsible, putting programs in place to reduce recidivism, to get out from underneath the federal receivership that we're in because of the healthcare delivery system within the prisons, and giving more authority and really establishing best practices for the counties as they implement the prison realignment that was put into place a number of years ago. Santa Cruz County being a real beacon in both the juvenile justice system and the adult justice system for the rest of the state, kind of leading the way in how we are responsible to our community, keeping our community safe, but reducing recidivism, making sure we're getting out from underneath that crushing cost of the prison system, and in a way, that's beneficial across the board. So, I've been, I've got a number of bills this year, mostly in the juvenile justice system, record sealing, trying to make sure that we're not treating kids as criminals when they're really victims, and making sure that the system is accountable to the juveniles there. So, that continues to be a lot of my work, as well as things that we can do for the cities and counties around the Great Monterey Bay. I, as you know, my district is mostly Santa Cruz County, northern Monterey County, the Monterey Bay, a little bit of Santa Clara County. This is God's country, and I pinch myself that I get to represent such a beautiful area in the state legislature and be there for you. So, I'm happy to answer questions that you have about how things went last year, things that you're looking forward to this year, and as always, if there are things that my office can do, Maureen McCarty's in the office, she's my district director, things that we can do for your beautiful little city here, let us know, because we're in constant contact with cities in the district and try to make sure that we know what your issues are, things that you're concerned about, things that we can help you with, with state agencies and others. We're there to serve. So, what can I answer?
Thank you, Mark, appreciate that.
Sure.
Mike?
Yes.
You know, you are truly a dedicated public servant. I've had the privilege of working with you on committees. I just, I love working with you.
Thank you.
Honestly.
Thank you.
One of my pet concerns is homelessness.
Yeah.
We push the city, and I help push the city with the other councilmembers, to spend money with the homeless project, the winter shelter. And, you know, my desire has always been to take the first step, which is the way to help homelessness is to give people a home.
Absolutely.
Without any restriction.
Yeah.
And yet, and you know what I'm going to say next, SB 876 has a real concern to me because it, I feel, preempts our ability to run the city. And honestly, and as much as I care to solve the homeless problem, it does nothing to solve the homeless problem, in my opinion.
Right.
So, talk to us about that, because it is, it's a hot button here.
Yeah. And I know the League of Cities has everybody spun up about it. The reality is, a lot of the provisions that were a concern have already been amended out of the bill. It has yet to see its first committee. There's a great conversation about homelessness. There was an Amiano bill a few years ago, and what it ended up being, although it's still, it died, what it ended up being was really trying to make sure, like Capitola, that cities are taking their own responsibility seriously, because there are jurisdictions who don't, that they're happy to push their homeless to jurisdictions that are taking it seriously. That's not fair. That's not the way to address the issues locally. So, that bill, who knows what it's going to look like by the time it comes over to the Assembly? Like I said, the worst, I know that the provisions that the cities, the League was worried about, those have already been amended out. Keep your eye on it, and let's stay current with it. Let me know about it. I'm watching it to see how it morphs. But again, I won't see it until this summer.
Okay.
And who knows what it's going to look like then? That's a bill that's controversial, and we'll see a lot of changes. So, be cautious about the alerts about what it represents. I'm happy to get you the bill text as it changes so that you can watch it. The biggest issue around homelessness is housing. We had a bill on the Assembly floor last June that was, that the Realtors had had a problem with, that a number of different stakeholders had had a problem with the previous year. We had everybody on board. We had all the stakeholders on board. Two-thirds vote built, and the internal House politics, I'm sorry to say, killed it. So, even though we had good policy, we had everyone who was concerned about it, built a coalition with the Realtors, built a coalition with everybody who manages the process around where that tax would have been coming from, everybody was in agreement, we still couldn't get it off the floor. That was very frustrating. This year, in the Assembly, there's a task force. I've been working very closely with a lot of my colleagues in the San Francisco Bay Area, and there's sort of a Bay Area Caucus that we've been forming around. Transportation and housing are our two biggest issues. We're going to try and lead the state in coming up with real solutions to the housing crisis as we see it. Get money to you to continue the work that you're doing at a local level, because that's the way, by really putting money on the table, letting you do the work that you need to do, that will make it the single biggest dent in the housing problem we have, which helps us solve homelessness, which helps us solve the work that I do in the foster care system. That's a big component of that, the transitional housing that we need for people coming out of prisons, coming out of addiction programs, the, most of the social ills that are so expensive, we can address with housing. We know that, and we are trying, trying to come up with some solutions that we can be partners with you. And the state's best way that we can do that is to get a permanent revenue source, get that money down to local jurisdictions, since you lost redevelopment agencies.
Yes.
Which was your tool to do that, very well aware of that. I was on the Board of Supervisors here when that was taken away. So, I get it, and we want to replace that for you.
As you know, Los Angeles has had phenomenal positive results, especially with veteran homelessness, in providing housing. So, a look to the south, I would never have thought that's where it would have come from, but that is where the solution came from. So, I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Yeah, no, with you 100%. Stay tuned. I'm hoping that we'll have some real solutions to be able to provide for you and resources so that you can continue to do the good work that you do.
Great, thank you, Mark.
Absolutely.
Councilmember, Craig. Glad you brought up our transportation proposal that may be on the ballot. And you also did mention self-help county, or?
Yes.
And for our listening public, there's quite a few that tune in, can you explain how that works and how it would benefit this area?
Yes, it will. The so-called self-help counties are those counties that have passed general sales tax measures, and it's sales tax because that's the most flexible way, one of the few tools we have from a revenue raising standpoint. Counties that have passed a general sales tax measure in order to benefit transportation because they've made that commitment. There are preferences in federal dollars and state dollars for money that are coming out of the large federal transportation programs and then through the California Transportation Commission here in California. So, if we can, if we can come to the agreement on the transportation piece, we should be putting a billion dollars, ideally, part of the plan is maybe a billion dollars a year for at least a limited period of time for transportation. That coupled with the self-help counties, the local measures, you'll be able, Santa Cruz County will be able to leverage that much more out of those state dollars, and again, federal dollars, if we can pass that measure. If it doesn't pass here, there still will be money, assuming we can get this deal done, available for local streets and roads. We're trying to build in components for transit, multimodal provisions as well. But when you look at the pavement management index for cities, counties, across the state, even for Caltrans, and the last investments we had done really were Caltrans during the highway systems, and cities and counties were left out of those calculations to a great extent. The current mechanisms are to build those back in for local jurisdictions to be able to fill potholes, do the maintenance you can, get your pavement management indices up where they should be. So, I'm going to knock on wood that we can get that deal, but again, stay in touch, and I am hopeful that Santa Cruz County can in fact become a self-help county, because then we'll be able to leverage all the trail systems, the bicycle paths, as well as the local streets and roads and all that other infrastructure that we so desperately need.
Thank you.
Questions?
Of all the issues we field up here, Mark, probably streets and roads is probably the number one from our community back to this council.
Believe me, I understand. Yeah, San Rosa Valley, when I was a county supervisor, I heard it just as much, yeah.
And then, two days ago, we had another setback. A state takes away more sales tax from the gas tax revenue.
Right.
Is the whole system broken to a point where?
Yeah. It is, and it has been, because we're so limited in the ways that we can raise and modify taxes. And with the old model of the gas tax, that's a declining resource because we, more fuel-efficient vehicles, more electric vehicles and other modes that people are going to, it's an outmoded way of raising revenue, and we don't address, we're not keeping up with the infrastructure implications based on that revenue stream. If we could have a real tax conversation in California and balance out, and without raising taxes, without raising the tax burden, but balancing out what the taxes are raised for, the nexus between revenues and expenditures in a much more rational way, then I think we would all be able to provide much better service, much more rational service to our constituents and be able to talk about that in a way. But given the politics, we really can't. So, we're left talking about sales taxes, we're left talking about sort of bits and pieces. But some of the good news is, for example, the trucking industry, part of the package is the diesel tax. The area most affected by it is the trucking industry. They get it, they're on board with that, they'll pay those fees, as long as those increased taxes, those revenues go to fixing the major trade corridors that are still in a world of hurt. That's a major economic driver for the state. So, we're trying to put those pieces together to have a rational system.
Are you confident we're going to have a transportation bill this year?
I was actually fairly confident last year. Yeah, I am reasonably confident. We needed to get through the managed care organization conversation. That was dire and even more expensive if we couldn't put those, put that together. And we have a solution around the, we have failed to fund, fully fund the disability community as well. We have a solution for that. In this package that we're hopefully voting on on Monday, now our attention will be paid to, and hopefully, the governor's attention to the transportation piece. With that horsepower behind it, yeah, I think, I think we are, or should, we have no excuse if we can't come up with a transportation piece.
Good to hear that.
Yeah, for you this year. I can't promise there are 120 legislators, but, and we need Republican support. And a lot of the Republicans I talked to get it, but we sort of have to work through the politics of that in order to make sure that they have a good message, that they're getting what they need out of that, and that's where the work is happening right now. Yeah.
Just a comment, I'm really hopeful about Sacramento, because now you get to serve for more years in one body if you want to. You can build relationships, build friendships, build bridges across the aisle and get some work done like it used to be when we didn't have such partisanship as we do up there, it's not as bad nationally. But I'm just glad that you're there and that people have more years to develop their expertise and their relationships to do the work at a state, because such important work to be done, and when there was the turnover before and so forth, it wasn't working as well. But this is going to be better.
And the mood in the Assembly especially, because that's where the change happened most immediately, those of us coming in with a longer horizon, we've settled down more quickly. We're taking, I chaired the Judiciary Committee, and I hope that with the new Speaker, I'll be able to continue to do that and build in the continuity. So, it's not the lobbyists who have the history and the knowledge, it's the legislators who have that. We are doing more oversight, we are doing more of what you expect from a legislature because we have that longer-term view, and, you're right, we are doing much more across the aisle. Most of my major initiatives, I'm doing with Republican support, because of those relationships, I can go and talk about the issues up front with someone who we can agree on the problem, but we don't necessarily agree on a solution or how we get there. We work that out. And if I'm sitting in a committee side by side with a Republican, right, that's a very powerful message, because on that Senate Committee or that Assembly Committee, Democrat or Republican, they can't criticize me, they can't criticize my Republican colleague. We've worked it out. And they usually look at us and say, oh, okay, that sounds well. That's how we should be behaving, that's how we should be governing, and we're doing a lot more of that up there. We're not still doing it in the budget, which is too bad, and we got to figure that out better. But in most policy matters, we are working well across the aisle. I'm proud to be a part of that and making sure that we have, as you know, the more ideas you have on the table as you make a decision, the better the decision, the better the policy. That's been lacking in California, but we are changing that.
Thanks, Mark. Don't go away. I'm going to see if there's anyone from the public that would like to ask Senator Stone a question. Come on up, Marilyn.
Yes, of course, I remember when you were on the Board of Supervisors, and I often think of this bumper sticker I had that said, "It'll be a great day when the schools have all the money they need." You used to be on a school board, and the Air Force has to have a big sale to buy a bomber. And it will be a great day when public transportation, social services have funds they need, and we don't have over 50 to 60% of our tax dollars going to the military budget. So, when things are siphoned out, your question, Dan Storten, is right on the mark, is the system broken? There's, you know, the whole structure is so wrong in the homeless situation. I, 50 years ago, I visited my mother's cousin in the former Soviet Union. There was no homelessness. People paid, she paid 5% of her income for rent, and the metro was beautiful. This is such an unjust system. So, I would like to see the League of Cities and Towns advocating, insisting on having a shift from the military budget to what are social necessities and benefits for cities and towns. And when we only have a sliver of the pie of the funds, we're not going to get very far, I don't think. And I also have to say, I am dismayed at your role in pushing mandatory toxic vaccines that have caused autism on all the children, and your push of the wireless technology that is also another toxic thing. I'd like to see you really live up to being an environmental representative. I'm sad to say, I don't see that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Marilyn. Is there anyone that have a question for Senator Stone? Seeing none, we will thank you for coming and sharing your information and allowing us to ask you questions, and look forward to seeing you again with a smile on your face and some success. How's that?
Thank you. Thank you very much, and I'll just tell you the good news, probably 70% of the state budget goes to education and healthcare and human services, so we don't have the military budget that the feds do, and we're doing a much better job there.
Thank you for clarifying that. Appreciate it. See you, Mark. Take care.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we'll move on to a report on closed session.
Yes, there were two items on closed session. One was an item of pending litigation, and that is the water rock construction arbitration matter. Another was an item of labor negotiations involving all bargaining groups. There was no reportable action.
Thank you for that report. And Sue, do we have any additional information received?
Yes, we received two additional information, one for item 11A regarding endorsing the Santa Cruz Libraries Tax Revenue Ballot Measure, and also, one email for item 11C regarding the ordinance enlisting the municipal code and the admin policy regarding surf school regulations. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Manager, do we have any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Staff has no changes to the agenda.
Okay, with that, we'll move forward to the public comment period. This is a oral communication period, which we allow everyone to speak for three minutes on an item that is not on the regular scheduled agenda. So, please come up and state your name and write your address, and let us know what you'd
I feel like we live in a society very dominated by corporations, and corporate rule is incompatible with democracy, and I know you try to represent the public, but as long as we have that kind of structure, we're in trouble. And with the telecommunications industry, there's so much evidence that this is telecommunications toxic tyranny, I call it. And when we are assaulted with microwaves that damage health, that the World Health Organization puts them in 2B category, of course, synergins with lead and DDT and benzene, when our rights to health are taken away, we basically have no rights. And I'd like to see all elected representatives stand up to represent our rights to health and not be assaulted. Each of you, I think everyone has had a copy of this, "Take Back Your Power," is that correct?
That's correct.
And have you seen it, too, everybody? Okay, because that's critical information. Now, when you have developments before you that are proposed, house or garage or whatever, unlike these kind of developments, when there's a plan for a wireless Verizon microwave site, and by the way, I was at a planning commission meeting yesterday in the county where the people of La Sela Beach with their attorney were opposing the approval of a Verizon cell tower off San Andreas Road, I think it's a DeLucci property, having to get continued. But unlike other developments where there may be some mitigation or change, this is forced radiation and debilitation into other people's bodies and properties without their consent or knowledge. It's like a without their consent or knowledge. It's like a toxic trespass. The garage is built, a building's standing there. It's not causing constant harm. And there is an item on the consent agenda I'll just refer to, of an appeal hearing of the approval of a Verizon site at the Gonia Plaza. The owner is Stephanie Jenkins at yahoo.com. And as with other developments, people who are affected, who live nearby, or in this case, shop nearby, it's very appropriate to weigh in on what you would like to see happen. So I hope people will advocate for their health rights and their rights not to be harmed. Thank you.
Thank you, Marilyn.
Hello?
Hello.
My name is Ryan Simon. Congressman Sam Fars, aide for the Mid-County Santa Cruz University through Aptos. I just wanted to come to your council meeting and introduce myself. I'm the congressman's liaison to this community. I started in May, so I apologize for taking so long to come visit. Thank you to Stephanie for encouraging me to come visit and observe the council meeting. I'm based out of our county building office on the third floor. So if you ever need to get in touch with the congressman's office, I'm sure you know how. And I'm available to be in ear and pass on information from you to the congressman's office and pass on information from our office on issues that you care about. So.
Great. Thanks for coming, Ryan. We appreciate it. Is there anyone else who would like to speak during public comment? With that, we'll go ahead and close our public comment period. We'll move on to City Council Treasurer comments. City Council, Councilman Germany, any comments? Councilmember Tran, comments?
Comments? No comments.
Okay. Treasurer comments?
I have a couple comments. First, I'd like to say thank you. Last city council meeting, you had me speechless, and I'm not certain that I got to say thank you for recognizing my new addition. On another note, I wanted to let you know the Finance Advisory Committee met on February 16th. We discussed the annual financial report as well as the mid-year report as also budget adjustments. At our next meeting in March, we're going to be starting our budget discussion. So we're getting a little bit ahead of the ball, which is great. So if anyone would like to join us, our meeting is March 15th. And again, we'll be starting the budget discussion for our next budget.
Great.
Thank you.
Any staff comments?
I just want to announce that we're going to be, there's going to be a closure on Wharf Road coming up on March 3rd. I hope you can repair the railing that was damaged in an accident earlier this winter. Just let folks know first thing in the morning. Hopefully done before the evening rush hour, but we'll see how the work progresses.
That'll be both lanes?
No, one lane.
One lane.
Just the uphill lane.
Traffic control on Wharf Road. Okay, great. That's better than closed. Okay. With that, we're going to move to a new section that we are going to begin. This is an addition we've added to our meeting schedule, which is a report from the city representatives. And let me give a little clarification, just so everybody knows, in addition to serving on the city council, each council member sits on various boards throughout the county that make decisions for what affects our county. And the suggestion was made that we should come back to the meeting on a regular basis and report on those boards what's going on in addition. So you know, what's not only going on in the city of Capitola, but what might be going on in Santa Cruz County with regards to the Regional Transportation Commission, to the metro bus system, to the library system. So with that, I'm going to start with Councilman Termini. And for tonight, Old Man, I'm just going to ask you all to just tell me the committees that you're on for the public, and then quickly forward. And then as we move forward, we'll just do it with a report based on the committees you're on. So, Councilman Termini.
Great. Well, the Library Advisory Committee had its first meeting. It was mostly the formalities of arranging our schedule and the makeup of the committee. We looked at the birthday party we're going to be having for the Capitola Branch Library coming up. I think it's the 24th of March, 22nd?
Sixteenth.
26th of March, day before Easter. But we'll be announcing that more as time goes on. I am formerly with the Monterey Bay Air Quality Control District, but have just termed off that. But it's a really highly functioning board, and it does a lot for the air quality in our area. I'm your Chair of the Art and Cultural Commission. We have picked all of our bands for next year. We'll be announcing them very shortly. You'll get your postcard in the mail to put up under refrigerator all over Capitola. You're representative as the council representative on the Chamber of Commerce. They had their business showcase yesterday to great success at Seacliff, and it was well-received. And I'm also the Chair of the local Red Cross, which you will be giving a proclamation to very shortly. You cannot imagine how much is done in this county by the Red Cross. We have put in over 600 smoke detectors in mobile homes in the last six months. That is life-saving, you know, before the fact. You know, and you know, we house people and feed them in the event of a fire or a natural disaster. But all over the world, the Red Cross feeds millions of people every day who are on the brink of demise. So thank you for that.
Well done. Councilmember Tran, tell us the committees you're on.
So I'm sort of the new guy here, and I'm not on any commissions county-wise. I think I'm sort of the alternate. And I was alternate with you. Yeah, I'm altering a lot of them, but our guys seem to get to the commission meetings, so I'm not called upon, except I did help you out once.
Oh, why you did?
Yes, that was fun. My fast education on library issues. But I do serve on a number of other things. I'm standing in for, I guess, Steve, who's been, Steve Jesper, who used to do the Hazmat Commission. And I did report on that last meeting. And just reiterate, we do need some public representation from the general public on that. A couple other things I've done locally is the Finance Advisory Committee, but Mark's going to talk about that a little bit later, the mid-year report. Also very exciting is the Council on the Environment here, and a number of things that we've done recently. Members have started some projects to remove ivy from Perry Park. That is actually going again. There'll be another scheduled event. Also, I've joined a collaborative effort in this area as my duty, I guess, part of that commission. And I'm working with Russ and Rich. Maybe you could talk a little bit about that, because hopefully you'll be our designated representative on that. That's basically sea level rise and all the issues that are related to climate that are going to affect this area. That's what this collaborative is on. So extending down to San Luis Obispo, Santa Cruz, down to San Luis Obispo. And then also, what is it, the Monterey Bay CAC. And I think, Rich, you are representative on that. I was hoping we could get a report at some point on that. And so there's that. What's the other thing? Oh, yeah. Another committee that I'm actually on is the Children's Network. And that's kind of interesting. That's working on a project to reduce youth violence in this county. And we don't have a program in this particular area right now, but I wanted to find out about the program. So I volunteered on the organizing effort that's going on in Live Oak. So I joined a subcommittee there on neighborhood youth violence reduction. And we've agreed on certain actions. And that's going to be formalized in a meeting in a couple of weeks. And I'll report back when those are formalized, and we could get an idea of some of the proactive ways that we could work on reducing youth violence. But that's for Live Oak. And then when it comes here, I'll be ready for that and be more familiar with those issues. Yesterday, I went to a very interesting meeting that was held at Main Street. So it was a little outside my area. It was held by John Leopold. And so what John Leopold was trying to address is, in his area, is streets, safe access to schools, and a lot of other programs that we would consider our CIP projects. So he had the county representative that deals with all the roads. And they did a pretty good presentation. And the idea of this presentation, which I fully support, is to come to the citizens first and ask them what they really would like in terms of improvements at street corners, crossings, lights, and the whole works. And there was a really good, I guess, presentation of what the problems are. So it wasn't that we're going to give you something to do, and this is our solution. It's what do you feel? So the focus there, being that it was at Main Street, was all in Aptos Village. So there was a lot of businesses there. There was a lot of people that lived in the area. And, you know, they would talk about coming down SoCal and how everyone speeds up and, you know, the problems when there's commute times and stuff like that. You know, it's gridlocked there. So John is asking you, John's asking the guys, like, what would you like to do? Do you want a stop sign? Do you want an electric light? Do you want it, you know, sort of sequenced? I mean, you know, and these are going to be some of the consequences. So the meeting was very good. And there was no solutions at that point, but there was a lot of input. And presumably, he's going to come back to the residents and ask a little bit more about, this is how far we've done on the suggestions that you brought forward. So I really liked that approach. And so that was the meeting I went to last night, even though it was outside my area. Thanks.
Thank you, Senator Fars. Working on some ADA issues, Americans with Disabilities, to identify some needs in the city and to update our transition plan following the Water Board meetings, which are very, very interesting, very, very interesting and extremely important. I just joined the Seniors Council Advisory Council. And we had a very interesting meeting. We gave Supervisor Bruce McPherson and Supervisor Greg Caput an earful at the last meeting about the inequity of the splitting of the funds for paratransit services between lift line and metro. Bruce said, "There's going to be a lot more discussion, more discussion, probably some movement, probably not as much as you want, but things are happening." And it was good. We were very direct and very serious. And I think you would have appreciated the discussion because it was, he got the message that we were not happy with that. A lot of people were not happy with that. And it was an odd process. It wasn't very open. And even he was confused about what had happened, and Greg was confused. And it was, you know, it was a confusing subject. So anyway, I don't know what's going to happen. I don't know what's going to happen with that. Mainly, I'm working on the Sweet 16 Birthday Party for the library and 40th Birthday Party for the museum in June, but mostly trying to get the library measure passed in June. So we're going to work really, I'm going to work very hard on that.
Those are all big projects. Councilman North, tell us your opinion.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I sit on the Regional Transportation Commission, and it's really a hot time, hot topic right now. And bringing forward a half-cent sales tax measure, it'll cover local roads, it'll cover highway freeway improvements, improvements along the rail corridor. And right now, it's including the advancement of some type of train service, but certainly doing a 32-mile train line along there. Also, the expansion of paratransit. And I will continue to update you as we move closer to formulating this tax measure. But it's, as Mark Stone had said earlier, Santa Cruz County needs to become a self-help county. Otherwise, those problems we have out there will be there 10 years from now if we don't. This is the year for us to take action. The other committee I sit on that's actually pretty close to my heart is the Wharf Committee. And Mike, actually, Michael Termini sits on that with me. And we had a meeting yesterday, and we brought in, we've had engineering study done on the conditions of the wharf. And we've got to remember, this is the oldest wood wharf in the state of California, on the California coastline. It's taken its toll over time. And anybody that stands there and watches the storm go through can see its vulnerability. Someday, the ocean will take that wharf. It's just, we would like to do, over possibly a 10-year period, is establish a program within the city that we can use local money as well as outside money and make this, give this wharf some longevity. It has its value to our community in many ways. The most important thing is, it's probably the only time that 50% of people that come to the California coastline get off of the shoreline. It's the only time they've ever in their life been out of our water. So, and then also, it's a safe refuge as far as coming in from the sea, as well as, it's the pride and joy of Capitola. It's our identity. So it has value to the community. I'm hoping this next year that we can establish a financial means to keep it alive. Because if we don't take action now, it won't be there. It's just a matter of time. That's it.
Good point. Thanks for those comments. Myself, I sit on a few committees. I sit on the AMBAG, and that is the Association of Monterey Area Governments. And what that is, is it's 24 representatives from Santa Cruz County, San Benito County, and Monterey County. And what that agency is charged with doing is, for the most part, setting up transportation plans, housing plans, and providing the mechanism for we can acquire federal and state funds to accomplish some projects. So mostly a committee to develop procedures. And there's really not much going on in that right now. We're just applying for different funds, trying to figure out how the transportation routes are going to be expanded, where they're going to allow, you know, where more buildings are going to take off, trying to forecast the population growth in those counties and how it's going to affect our roads and our infrastructure. The other commission I sit on is the LAVCO Commission, which is the Local Area Formation Committee. And what that does is, it's an agency that deals with whenever there is some form of service that is, needs to be provided outside of a jurisdiction. So if there's somebody that needs a water line that's outside of the city limits, if they're in a rural area, they can apply to acquire that service. So this commission makes decisions whether it's prudent to make that allocation or that exception to do that. I also sit on the Metro Board, the bus system. And that's a very challenging committee at this time, much like Dennis said with the RTC. The metro bus system, which we all love and use, has about a $6 million deficit. And because of that, a lot of its services are being threatened with being cut or curtailed. So I actually spent this afternoon at Cabrillo College with the students. We're trying to get them to adopt a self-imposed fee for riding the bus. We're giving them a year-round bus pass that they can use for a nominal fee. The requirement is that every student has to buy it. So it's just another assessment for them to school. But the upside is, it's going to possibly raise a million dollars. And when you have a $6 million deficit, a million dollars into that is going to make a big difference. So keep you posted on that. The one other thing that I want to do when we're in this period is, one of the benefits of being the mayor is you're allowed to establish a committee, a temporary committee, to see that there's some item that is of concern in the city is addressed with. And one of the items that we have been struggling with over the last year is, we passed Measure O with the citizens, and they generously funded into our coffers upwards of $3 million that we need to allocate towards roads and streets in what we call CIP projects, capital improvement projects. And we've now got this money, and we've got this backlog of projects, and we became overwhelmed. So we're going to establish this, I'd like to establish this committee. I'd like to have the city manager on it, the Public Works Director, myself, and I'm looking for one other volunteer from the city council to sit on that committee.
What's the purpose of it?
The purpose is to have monthly meetings to follow and regulate and keep track of our CIP projects and make sure that we are moving ahead with all those projects that the citizens expect us to get done. And I expect this to last for six to eight months at the most.
I'd be interested.
I think we're probably all interested. I mean, we've been getting these reports. So do we need another, do we need another committee? Does staff have time for a committee? Does councilmembers have?
This is a short committee, and this is in a conference with the city manager. And it was basically a little bit of his idea. And I think it would be limited to four. And I think that the purpose is, is to just add to the transparency, have the discussions. And I believe we're already moving forward. I think most recently, the Vice Project is done. We're getting ready to start. I'm not trying to take our Public Works Director's thunder, but I think we're going to start the Stockton Avenue project imminently. And been told that 30th Avenue is the middle of March or the end of March, Steve? Is there a head nod, something like that? I'll bring you up now because it's a good time. I'll bring you up now, because it's a good time.
The Stockton Avenue project is May 14, March 14. And I suspect, we've sent the contract documents over on 38, so I suspect it'll be end of March before that starts.
And I think the main purpose of this committee is to just stimulate the conversation, have the dialogue, keep us informed so that we can come back and report, keep the public informed that these projects actually are going to take place. And try to give the best timeline we can. And it's my, it's my opinion that within six to eight months, we will be caught up with most of these projects, and there won't be a need for that committee. We'll just have regular reports from our public works director.
Can't imagine us getting caught up. We have, we have, you know, we have years' worth of this, but...
The word of the day is optimism. So Councilmember Tran, raise his hand.
Sounds good.
Okay, then let's, the committee will be the public works director, city manager, myself, and councilman Tran. And city manager will let us know when our first meeting is.
Okay, Mr. American, I...
While you're up there, Steve, I've got staff...
I need to make a correction. I gave the city manager the wrong signal on the wharf road closure. It will be, both lanes will be closed. I want to make that correction. I apologize.
Well, I, it is what it is, and that will be for most of the day.
Yes.
You're going to put a notice out, like, for a couple of days, saying it's going to be closed on that day, so people, motorists will know?
We've put out notices, we've notified metro and all the emergency services and things like that.
What are the hours going to be?
I think it's going to start at 8:00 in the morning and go until they're gone to get that railing replaced.
March 13. And how far back do we put signs that the roads close, and do they have to get imminently right to that area?
No, no, they'll be, because we'll be directing them down 47th Avenue, so they'll be as they come in, approach that way.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you for that update. Okay. So with that, we'll move on to boards, commissions, and committee appointments. Sue, do we have any pending appointments?
Yes, this is regarding the Advisory Council to the Area Agency on Aging of Santa Cruz County and San Benito Counties. And as you know, Al Carlson has resigned, so that leaves an opening for a city representative and an alternate. Councilmember Harland requests interest to be the city's representative, and we also received an application from Linda Pippen, so she would be interested in being on the council as well.
Stephanie, thanks for volunteering for that. And do you have any information on the woman that applied?
Nope, after we interview her, then Jacque and I are going to interview her and...
The two of you are going to get together and interview?
We'll make recommendations.
Mr. Mayor, I did talk with Linda, and I did say that I'm pretty sure Stephanie's going to want to talk with you, and so try to arrange a joint, you know, all three of us to get together.
Okay, great.
Her resume is great, and she's also in the, she's outside the city, but she's in the area that, according to the post office, a lot of people think they live in Capitola, so it's that hazy area.
A unique area.
Yes.
Okay, well, we'll let you two interview her and then you...
Or if anybody else wants to also, feel free to.
When you get back to us, we'll make that appointment. Okay. So let's move on to the consent calendar. This is a group of items that have already been discussed and have already been presented, and we usually approve these in one group. Is there anybody on the council that would like to pull any of the consent items?
I just want to make a comment on the last meeting minutes. Is that okay?
Sure.
Okay. So Stephanie had asked for a letter to be sent in regards to Director Lester. Was any letter said at all?
We haven't worked, we haven't done it yet.
Yeah, okay.
We'll work on that.
That was just a request.
Yeah, okay. The other thing is, I'd like to report on Councilman Termini's suggestion, and we talked to SoCal School District about using this room because of the audio and the TV. So we did bring that up. So that's maybe under consideration.
We brought it up. It didn't seem that they were very receptive to it, but we made the offer.
We did make the offer.
Okay. So you're okay with the consent calendar?
And can we, I would, I prefer that you went to the public and asked them first, because if they don't pull an item, I will pull one.
I will bring it back to us. Is there anyone from the public that would like to pull an item on the consent calendar? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council.
I would like to, I would like to pull item 10C.
I'd already met with Marilyn, she was okay with that.
If someone will pull it.
Okay, it's pulled. We're going to put that at, going to add that on 10C will go on the agenda to, it will be 11D.
Mr. Mayor, since that's merely an item to set a public hearing, maybe it's something we can take right after we approve the consent agenda? Just get it out of the way, if that's okay with you.
Did you have a specific point about the...
I would just, I would just, I want to know, I want to know what the process is of notification on this, on this item.
The city manager can share that, with the noticing of this item? Hold on.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Norton. For noticing to set a public hearing, we don't send out public notices through the mail. For, when you actually hear the project, though, we will notify everybody within a 500-foot radius for that project.
So we'll notice for the council meeting when the hearing is set?
Correct.
The 500 feet, okay. Is this true of the appeal of the permit for the garage addition too? Is that true, that?
Same thing, except a 300-foot radius. We do have an expanded notification process in the code for wireless facilities.
And when, when would you expect each of these items to come back to council?
I believe it's March 10 for the wireless facility, and I want to say April...
April 14.
April 14 for the design permit on Garnet.
Okay, thank you.
You know, the individual tenants don't get notified, do they, of a shopping center? I mean, that would be something that would be, would be really nice to do here, just to let them, you know, if someone could pass out a notice to all the tenants there, we could notify them.
Sure, we'll look into it and make it happen.
I would, I would like to make a request when we get appeal on items. I would like, I would request that, that we see the minutes of the meeting and discussion and...
The planning commission meeting?
Yes, yeah, because I really don't know what grounds that they, they approve these projects on, and so I'd like to see that. If we could have that when we get to this point here, Rich, that would help me in making a decision whether...
Sure, well, I'd as attachment to your staff report.
Okay, thank you.
I'll move the consent calendar.
Second.
Is it second? Okay, we have a motion and a second for the consent. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Consent calendar carries unanimously. Okay, with that, we'll move to the general government public hearing portion, and our first item is, A, consider a resolution endorsing the Santa Cruz Library's tax revenue ballot measure.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this item is on before you, before you this evening at the request of the Friends of the Santa Cruz County Libraries. As you're aware, in December, the city council approved changes to our regional financing authority to authorize the city's participation in a regional bond to fund improvements to our libraries throughout the county, with the exception of the Watsonville area. Earlier this month, the financing authority took its final action to place the bond measure on the June 7 election, which will be the presidential primary election coming up here shortly. The measure, as you're aware, would allow the issuance of up to $67 million in bonds. The tax rate would be $49.50 for residential units, and commercial would be taxed at $86 a year. As part of the overall distribution of those funds, Capitola received $8 million towards our new library, which, in addition to the money we've already saved, would bring our project budget to 10.6 million. As you know, just last meeting, we approved the conceptual rendering, which is just sort of the first look and feel that people might have of what our new Capitola library might look like. So with that, I'm available for questions, and the recommendation is to approve the resolution endorsing the overall revenue measure. Are there any questions?
I have a question, but maybe my question's for Barbara. I don't know if you'd want to bring the library representative forward or let her speak first?
Of course.
That would be, that would be fine. Barbara, would you mind coming up?
Thank you, Barbara. You know, I, I received this in the mail yesterday. I think everybody in Capitola received this, and it probably is the beginning of the first mail. The one thing that's noticeably different to me in this, and also in the resolution, nowhere does it say that we're going to build a library. Is, why, why, why are we not telling the public we want to build the library? Is there, is there a reason for that, or...
You know, I, I, the first time I saw that was today in the mail, myself. I'm not a member of the central campaign committee, although I think that came from the library itself.
Councilmember Norton, so I can probably answer the question. That was, that's mailed countywide, so that was sent to every county resident. It was the same flyer, and they've developed the overall campaign message, and that's what you're seeing there. The city does plan on sending out an informational flyer similar to that to all city residents. We've been targeting probably the very end of April, early May, and that will be focused on our branch, our impacts to our library, to our residents, and what it would mean for our community. So this was a countywide focus. We will have, obviously, something we distribute that has a local focus.
And I understand that, but I want this library because we're going to have a new one. I don't want to rebuild or refurbish it, and the way this comes across, that's what we're doing here. And even in our resolution, it doesn't say we're building a new library. What it says, if you'd like me to read it here, it says, "Whereas our library facilities themselves are seriously outdated and inadequate, with each branch in need of major repair, remodeling, modernization, expansion, or even replacement in order to meet the current and future needs," which it does apply to us. If this is our resolution from this council, it should say that we want to build a library. That's the, that's the intent, that's why we're doing this, or we wouldn't be doing it. Okay? That's, I don't, I don't know if it was, you know, that was just overlooked, or just it's just how this, this campaign's going to go. But I think to open this to the public, particularly in Capitola, is pretty important.
Well, in our, in our subsequent discussions, we've, we've definitely talked about absolutely highlighting that it absolutely is going to be the key. It's absolutely going to be, we're not seeing it maybe here, but it will be.
But this is the resolution we're making.
We can add it.
Let me ask a question.
And I also have seen, I don't know if it was the final version, but there is a fact sheet that the campaign committee is putting out. And in that fact sheet, it does specifically break it out by how much money is allocated to each jurisdiction and what that jurisdiction is planning to do. So for, for the Capitola portion, it did specifically state $8 million for building a new library. It's not in the resolution, obviously.
And remember, we have to be, this, this came from the library, from the library's budget, so it can be information-only and very general. We walk a very fine line, not trying to promote a bond measure with public money. So that is from, from our marketing firm, that's just getting it in the public eye that we need to modernize the entire system. And the language in our resolution is pretty much the same as all the cities are being asked to pass, which is, it does all these things, and in some cases, it replaces branches. It replaces Felton, it replaces Capitola. We can certainly add more, but I think what's most important is we, as a group, being behind the measure in concept.
Thank you, Barbara, for your comments. Mike, just, just quick question, just for clarification. In your, you've been on the library board the entire time, you've been our representative. In your opinion, is it your impression that we are going to build a new library based on your input?
Yes.
Thank you.
And we will, we will get $8 million, and we will be charged with building a new library with it, just as the city in Santa Cruz will receive $25 million, and they have three branches to either replace or remodel. So everyone, each municipality, each government entity gets the pot of money that's been allocated, and we have to do that. Now, it's our challenge to build the best and most library we can build with the amount of money given to us. That doesn't say that we can't find other sources to bring more money into it, to make it even better. And I believe that a great effort has to be put behind it in Capitola. Capitola has to carry a lot of this, because it's very, very important. And we serve not only Capitola, but Live Oak and SoCal as well, with two-thirds of our patrons coming from there.
I'm going to go ahead and open up to the public. Barbara, is anything else you'd like to add?
Yes.
Go ahead, while you're up there.
Okay. I am in the midst of kicking off the Capitola Branch Friends Organization, along with Stephanie. And the primary focus of that will be to get this measure passed, and then move on once we have funding, move on to supporting the construction of our new branch. And I will say that, that I would really urge council members as individuals to be actively supporting this measure. The Capitola Library is widely used, and for a library of its small size today, it's amazing what kind of use it gets. Much of that use is from people who do not live in Capitola. So when we build our library, we're meeting the needs of a larger group than, than the residents of Capitola. And passing this measure and getting this, getting the measure passed will provide us with sufficient monies, we believe, to, to build a library that will look forward to the 21st century and will meet the, the needs of not, not only our Capitola residents, but all the users of the Capitola library. So I also would urge the community to get involved in, in helping us get this measure passed, and, and then becoming members of the Friends and working on supporting the construction of this. So thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you too, Barbara. Question? No, go ahead.
Yeah. How would someone contact you or others in the Friends so that they could join?
Well, we're, we're just starting it up, so on my to-do list is to get a P.O. box and an email number, but they could contact me personally at this point, and my number is, is listed. So it's Barbara Gorson.
Okay. One other question. I know we've had the meetings on the exterior and how it's going to fit in as people would like it to be for Capitola, and that's what led to these drawings. I've received a couple of comments about what goes inside, and, you know, I am able to answer that a little bit, but what's the process moving on?
Well, we, we did have, probably going back three, maybe four years, a library consultant come in and, and with a lot of community input and focus groups, looking at data and stats from the library, et cetera, come up with what in library lingo is called a program for the library. But basically, what that is, is a listing of what square footage would be needed to meet the demand that this consultant believes this library has, and what functions, services, and programs would be in, in the library. So a teen area, you know, a children's area, small meeting rooms for study groups, et cetera, et cetera. Now that's, without having the funding, that was sort of nice to look at and shoot for. Once we have the funding, then my understanding would be that with more community input, we would, we would focus and narrow down on the specifics of how, what percentage of the square footage would be allocated to children's or to teens, et cetera.
And there's a needs assessment that the city manager can provide to you that shows pictures, graphs, you know, sample layouts of a potential library of the size that we're going to build.
Okay. Thank you very much, Barbara, for everything you're doing. Appreciate it. Anyone else from the public like to speak on the library? With that, we'll bring it back for a discussion and a motion.
Just to put the word out there, people are free to contact me also for, to help with anything about the library.
Great. Is there a motion?
I will move the resolution with the addition that Capitola, with this effort, will construct its new branch library.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. That, we will move to item B, is consider a general event permit for a fireworks show by the Monte Foundation in the city of Capitola, and believe the police chief.
Good evening, Mayor Boroff and city council members. As you know, the last couple of years, the Mark Monte Foundation has produced a fireworks display show in the city of Capitola. So tonight, you have the opportunity to consider a general event permit for a fireworks show in the city of Capitola by the Monte Foundation, and to authorize the city manager to issue a special event permit for the show to be conducted on Sunday, October 9, 2016. As you know, over the last 20 years, the Monte Foundation has put together a fireworks display show for Santa Cruz County. The purpose of the show is to provide funding to youth programs within Santa Cruz County. The last two years, the foundation has put on a display that is lit from the wharf and goes over the Bay Area. And in 2014, the foundation helped fund and assist in raising funds for the McGregor Skate Park. Last year, the show helped raise funds to resurface the aging tennis courts at Jade Street Park. This year, the foundation would like to come back and produce a show... This year, the foundation would like to come back and produce a show on October 9th. We've had good collaboration efforts with the foundation in regards to any type of concerns that we've had. Fortunately enough, the last two years, there has not been any major events or any issues regarding traffic. What we've utilized is the same traffic plan that we use with the Wharf to Wharf, and that's been very successful. We do close roads to the Espinon and coming down Wharf Road or the Wharf Road and Cliff Drive. And the reason for that is, we don't want people to stop in the middle of the street in their cars and watch the show, because emergency vehicles would not be able to get down to the village. And in the past, it's usually about 20 or 30 minutes before the show starts. The show itself is about 20 minutes, and traffic seems to really move out fairly quickly. Now, with the road closures, we do allow traffic to move out, and so it seems to have garnered a lot of support, and the traffic plan seems to be working fairly well for us. We did have some issues last year regarding the wind as it moved. It was not anticipated to move in the direction that it did, but looking at some of the photographs, you could see where the wind was pushing some of the smoke and some of the fallout from the explosion of the fireworks out over to the jewel box area. So we have met with the foundation. They are very receptive, and they work well with us in regards to meeting those needs and any concerns that we might have. They also, the other issue is, that is a three-day weekend, and so having it on a Sunday, we have to close the wharf. And so the wharf businesses, they are very supportive of city activities, but they always want to at least remind council that they have to close a day in advance, and I think that's important to mention. And they do work well with us. They're very receptive to the foundation's opportunities and what they want to do with the show. And so they have been very accepting and working with us, and we appreciate them as well. So again, it is a three-day weekend. Sunday has worked the last couple of years, and so what we have in front of you tonight is to discuss the possibility of authorizing a special event permit for October 9th, 2016. And I'm available for questions. Mr. Mark Monti was not available for personal reasons tonight, but I am prepared to answer questions.
Any questions for the chief? Go ahead, councilmember.
Chief, we broached the concept with Mark when he was here about throttling back the aggressiveness of the fireworks a little bit. They had a little bit too much fun last year, and we've had great fireworks that were a little more paced, a little more enjoyable, and a little less like downtown Beirut. And I think he was responsive to that, wasn't he?
He was extremely responsive, and he really enjoys what the show provides in regards to helping raising funds for youth and their activities. He did indicate that those are what they call salute types fireworks, and so he is working with his vendor provider to reduce that atmosphere, but he, very, very supportive and responsive.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Question? Is that, is that the holiday weekend? Because we talked about moving it to avoid conflicts with the businesses.
It is the holiday weekend, and we did talk about it, and we do work with the businesses to help compensate and assist them. So there are, they are aware of those dates, and that's the same date that we've used in past years.
I know it is, but it's been problems for them. So, you know, I mean, why can't we move it? They don't want to move it, but why can't we move it? I mean, it's a local event. It's not necessarily for, you know, all the visitors that we have, and so it doesn't, one weekend's like another. So if it disadvantages one business, why not try to help them out and move it?
Trying to move it conflicts with other fireworks shows that go on in other municipalities. And so instead of having two shows on the same night, the other issue is we start to bump up against some of the special events in town. So it becomes a problem of trying to managing too many events at once, and so...
They're not the only people that do fireworks, I'm sure.
We're not the only ones, yes.
Their vendors, I'm sure we could probably get.
Yeah, it's just, I think City of Santa Cruz, in the past, they've had theirs the following weekend with their birthday celebration, and so we would be competing against that on the same night if we moved it.
It's all right. I mean, as I say, it's for us, it's local, it's for us. Santa Cruz is for Santa Cruz. If they want to, you know, visit, you know, and visit the other shows, we all do that. I'm thinking about the local businesses.
Sure.
And, and I'm not, I'm not trying to give you a hard time, but...
No, no, no.
I just want, I just wanted to bring it up for the councilmembers, because we had talked about it. We can change the date.
No, I thought we were okay with the local businesses.
They are not, they're not okay with it.
They are okay. We can compensate them, and they are compensated well, and there's two businesses out there, and we, I think we forgive them a month or two of rent every year.
We gave them a month, a month of free rent. They were very happy with that. And I think that the reason is Monday is a holiday, so kids not being in school, so that's why Sunday night was a good night. I thought we'd worked out a great schedule here. It's Columbus Day, isn't it? That's correct. And part of it was because of the nighttime, families enjoyed being able to at least stay out a little later and not have school the next day.
Well, I got some negative feedback from the businesses, so it was a mixed message there.
Businesses on the wharf...
You talked to Frank, right? You talked to Frank?
No, I think...
You always get something negative from Frank.
I think the businesses on the wharf...
He loves it.
The city manager, were the businesses on the wharf amenable to our arrangement?
Yeah.
I think they're all twisted.
I think at the end of the day, the businesses on the wharf are quite happy with the solution.
Yeah.
I think that's an understatement. Okay? So, yeah.
I would ask, the city manager is aware of what Mr. Monti has prepared for his donation this year?
That was my question to you, so if you want to defer to him, but do we have an idea of what we're going to donate this year?
So Mark and I have been trying to discuss about what, you know, his foundation supports youth in our community and, you know, youth activities as primary function, and he and I have been discussing different options for what kind of project he could support in Capitola next year. And I'll tell you, the article came out in the newspaper the other day, phone rang in my office the next morning, and Mark said, "The library. I really want to support the library." And I told him, "Hey, look, you got to understand, we're a couple of years, we're not going to be starting this next year." He said, "That's okay. The foundation is so aligned with the interests of the library and trying to help get it done." So that was really what he wanted me to pitch to you guys, is that's what he would like to try to support and bring his money into the game to help out the Capitola branch.
Are we feeling the love here now?
Wow. Maybe the totlot needs some improvement. It could be the Mark Monti totlot or something of that nature, but I think it's a great idea. Let me, before we carry away, thank chief, thanks for your presentation. May open up to the public. Anybody from the public like to speak on the Mark Monti fireworks celebration? Seeing none, we'll bring it back for discussion.
I'll move the staff recommendation.
I do have a question.
Is there a second on that motion?
I'll second.
And you have a question?
I do have a question. It's a little bit off the subject, and it's addressed to our city manager. I've been through a lot of discussions on renewing a permit, but for some of the programs that we have permits for, you know, it's, they're so well-run, and it's year after year, I was wondering if we could consider doing a permit for a number of years at a time, so that, you know, there's that certainty. And I don't know if this is something worth considering, but I could see a review of what happened the year before or something like that, but maybe it would give some people certainty.
Mr. Mayor, councilmember Bertrand, so you're talking about the special event permits, I assume, right?
Yes, sir.
So historically, the city actually issued at the city council each permit for each special event. And so it was a couple of years back, the chief and I proposed a reform, which we've been implementing these last couple of years, whereas we do a final season report, which we did at your meeting a couple, maybe a month ago, and it sort of summarized all the activities, and then staff has the authority to reissue the recurring special events at a staff level, rather than bringing them all to the council. New major special event permits still need to come to the city council, so we definitely streamline the process. Now, the reason why we do it at a staff level, still need to see the permits, is that we need to make sure the insurance is current, we need to make sure that everybody who's actually running it, because people change, even though we always do the Begonia Festival, we do the car show, the individuals who are actually there need to make sure that they understand what the city's requirements are going to be, they understand how the traffic control is going to work. So it is important to go through the steps, make sure everybody gets notified, fire gets brought into the loop, and a special event permit is issued. So we really have taken a lot of steps to streamline it and try to avoid unnecessary hearings on these to the extent that we can.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Any other comments or questions? Dennis?
I'm taking a little bit different stance on this thing, and I'll tell you why. Last year was awakening for me, and I was sitting up on the jewel box hill there, and anybody see the photograph that was taken from Depot Hill, the cross-section from the fireworks and what was blowing onto the...it was a solid flume from the height of the fireworks all the way to, in a triangle, right to the cliff at, on the jewel box. And everyone that I was sitting by was, first of all, just rubbing their eyes, because there was so much ash coming down on top of them. Pretty soon chunks this big were coming down around us, hitting people, it was coming down. So I came to the realization that everything we throw up in that sky comes down. It does. Everything we throw up there, it doesn't disintegrate. It actually takes a different form, in either form of smoke or debris, and comes back down. Don't, we prize our beaches here. We prize our environment here, yet it's okay for us to unload that much material into our environment, and that's into our water, into our beaches, into our landscape. All the cars that were up on Depot, on that hill that night, were covered, covered with ash. Now, maybe this was a freak event in that, that wind, that west wind did push it over. We'd never seen that before, and that's what caused that flume to do that. The point is, is that if it isn't pushing over there, where is it going? It's going into our ocean. It's going into our beaches. And those are, those are things we really value. I mean, fireworks are fun. Everybody loves the fireworks. But I think real seriously, we have to weigh out, what are we paying to get that to our environment every time that we have that type of show? And so Mike's movement to lessen them out certainly does move in that direction, but I think we've got to take a hard look at what the environmental consequences are of this type, of this type of events. And so it's not insignificant what it does to our community when we have this type of event. I'll, I'm not going to, I'm not going to vote against this project, but I have, I'm really reluctant, and if we ever get a situation like that, that we really need to consider not doing this type of event, because it's not, it's not something we would pride Capitola in. It really isn't. For that, for those, for that 40 minutes of fireworks, is it worth trading the environment that all around us for? I don't think so. Thank you.
Good point, Stan. Thanks, Dennis. Go ahead.
Yeah, I'd like to follow up on Dennis's comments. I had parked my car somewhere up in Montana once, and there was a forest fire, and I got caught in the debris that fell down. My whole car was covered. So things like this do affect a wide swath, and those were cinders and ash and stuff like that. So maybe we could ask Monti to get some information from his providers. I have a feeling of the fireworks, I have a feeling they've probably dealt with this issue before, and we could start there to try to get an answer to those questions. Would that be acceptable, at least as a start?
I just, I just think we have to watch this real closely, what, you know, is the trade-off really worth it to us as a community to do this? And at the beginning of this year, we actually discussed the idea, Rudy, remember taking a barge where we'd move it offshore farther?
Right.
That would change, it still dumps it in our bay. It is Monterey Bay Sanctuary. It is our water. It is our ocean. And where it's going now, it's going in those places, and it's absolutely covering the wharf and our beaches, as well when we get the west wind of the residential areas just inland from that. And we can imagine if that wind would turn up, would have turned right up the valley, gone up towards City Hall, you would even have a larger population affected by it. But I just think that when we do this kind of events, I'm real reluctant about this, but I think that we've got to really watch closely if the trade-off is worth us doing this as a community.
Well, you know, we have to get a permit from the sanctuary, and the sanctuary is concerned about that because of the noise of disturbing wildlife and the trash. So I know they're concerned about it. And, you know, that reminds me, when I was in San Diego recently, somebody told me that SeaWorld has a fireworks show like every night and several times, you know? And I was going to write them a letter to say, "How can you do that? How can you put that many fireworks out there, you know, in the ocean?" I mean, once in a while is one thing, but also all the time.
So I, I'm not sure if it helps at all, but I do know, so councilmember Harland is exactly correct, that the permit does, does require a permit from the sanctuary as well as the coastal commission to do the fireworks display. The, I know that the sanctuary did an overall evaluation of the fireworks displays around the Monterey Bay, and they determined a few specific launch sites and a limited number, I think it's like, I want to say six or eight total in a season in the Monterey Bay, and then they went through the full sequel environmental review process. So there are people looking at this. We do have a cleanup protocol that's required associated with it, that both we enforce as well as the Monterey Bay Sanctuary. So, you know, the issues you raised are certainly real, and we also do have people looking at this. In addition, I know that this same operator fireworks technician firm also does a fireworks show for the Monti Foundation in Lake Tahoe, which is probably the most regulated body of water in, on the planet. So there are a lot of folks looking at what they're doing.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you, Rudy.
Mike, any comments?
Before I call for the vote, I just want to chime in on that. I think all those points are valid. Stephanie, I think the sanctuary is really important, but I want to go beyond that. The event has been going on for years. There have been fireworks all over San Francisco. I mean, this is not something new, and I'm sure somebody has looked into it, and I'm sure the sanctuary wouldn't be giving their approval if they thought it was a problem. With regards to this event, I remember when we first voted on this a couple of years ago, and I had no idea where I was going to vote, we came down here, and I kept running into people that commented that this was one of the better events that they loved in this city. Terms like spectacular, amazing. So this was an event that was loved by the people, so I don't want to send the impression that people don't like it. It was very unfortunate last year that the wind changed and all the matter ended up in the jewel box, and I think that what we've done is, you know, we're working with Monti, who seems to be a great guy. He's contributing to our community. We're providing this event that our residents like, and we had an oops last year, okay? We learned a lesson about wind and density and severity of a grand finale, and I think all the points that councilman Terrence and yourself made about that are going to be taken into it. And Mark is going to be fine. I'm sure we're going to see a toned-down, wonderful event, and I think it's worth following up, Mr. City Manager, just about, you know, with Monti, about, does he have any information on the impact? But I would tend to believe that in all the, and when I sit on Ambag and the Monterey Sanctuary Committee, that if they thought it was bad for that sanctuary, they would be sending us a message, and they wouldn't be giving us a permit. So with that, I'm going to call for a, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Let's move on to the next item. This is item C, an introduction of an ordinance amending municipal code section 9.30.020, and amend the city's administrative poly policy I-34, section 3B regarding surf school recommendations. Mr. Police Chief?
Good evening. As you recall, at its February 11th meeting, the city council approved and adopted changes to the ordinance that regulates surf schools that operate on specific beaches in the city of Capitola. Those amended ordinance changes and policy changes call for a maximum of five surf school permits to be issued each calendar year. And with that, based on the council's decision to amend those ordinance, staff is introducing an ordinance amending the code accordingly, along with the administrative policy. And so I'm available for any questions if you...
Any questions of the police chief?
You explained, I apologize, I wasn't the last one. So what have we done to date, and where do things stand right now? Have we already approved five schools for this year?
Yes, and this is an amendment to the code. That's correct.
And all we're dealing with right now is changing the ordinance? Looking at changing the ordinance?
Changing the ordinance and the policy.
These are the follow-up actions based on your direction at the last meeting.
Any other questions for the police chief?
Chief, what do you think about the merits of having a 10-student limit instead of an A-student limit to make it easily divisible by the five schools?
Just going to ask.
Just a math question.
Well, I think it's important for the schools to all work together and to manage the process and to ensure that it's safe in the waters. We also, when we originally adopted this back in 2008, I believe, there was a lot of public input as to how many students to have in the water. And so I think we need to, we can always come back and look at that if that's something we wanted to do. But again, it comes down to the schools working together, partnering together, making sure those waters are properly managed and properly safe.
Shall we just stay with eight?
At this point, unless you want to do something differently.
That's good. That's good enough for me.
Question for the chief? Question for the chief?
So eight or 10, doesn't really matter. It's them working together to make it work.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Okay, questions for the chief? Anyone from the public like to come up and address us on this topic? Seeing none, we'll bring it back for discussion. Any further discussion?
I guess this isn't fair, Rudy, but what's your opinion on this?
He must ask one.
It's really a policy decision and the more cooperation there are amongst the instructors, it's always better that way. And I really truly believe that they provide great service to the visitors who are looking for a good time to go out in the water. And as long as they continue to do that, I think we're going to be in a good space. And it's just important that they manage their relationships with each other and manage the safety issue in the water.
Thank you.
You just passed the buck back to you.
Okay, I'm going to take off from here and I'm going to make a statement that we can't make this work this year if we get out of the surf school management. We should not be managing that break. We just say, okay, if you can't get along this year, do it. We will have no more schools down there.
Was there a motion with your statement or just a statement?
Well, we can make it into a motion. We can phrase it into it, meaning that we do as recommended in the ordinance here, the five schools, as recommended. But if there is a conflict and the police department has any problem with the participants in this program, that we no longer will do surf schools down in Capitola, they'll have to find, they'll have to take it down to Manresi.
Is there a second? Okay, thank you. Is there a motion?
I move that we accept the policy change.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. My one comment, just on the chief's comments here is I think just the fact that we are having this discussion tonight and no one is up at the podium talking is a good sign. I think that is a sign that the people that are involved in the surf schools understand that we do not want to deal with this anymore and manage it and it's up to them to management. And their silence tonight, to me, is their admission that they understand that and will take the responsibility and act like all the other businesses in the community. And in addition to that, I just want to say that with regards to the request for 10, although in my math, five divided into 10 equals two, was a great number. The history of this discussion was years ago, I believe back 2007, 2008, long before I ever lived in this town. This room was full of surfers who were protesting the inundation of surf schools taking over and it was their agreement to limit it to eight people in the water. So I don't feel the need to overturn that and increase it. I feel that the need is for harmony in the water and peace in Capitola. And I believe there's even a tile on the wall that says, "Live Aloha," which means be nice and share. So with that, I'm going to call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
The motion carries four to one with Councilman Termini dissenting.
Three to. I said no.
Let me rephrase that. Can you call for a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Norton?
No.
Councilmember Harland?
Aye.
Councilmember Bertrand?
Aye.
Councilmember Termini?
No.
Mayor Botor?
Aye.
Motion carries three to two with Bertrand, Harland, Bodorf. Aye. Termini and Norton, no. And with that, as a conclusion, we will bring this meeting to an adjournment. And we're going to take a five-minute break and then we're going to get on with the next scheduled meeting of the Capitola Council Successor Agency to the former redevelopment agency. So we'll take a five-minute break. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ten minutes? It's mid-year.[808.73]
Special joint budget session, Capitol Council Successor Agency meeting to order. We do not need a roll call so we can proceed with additional materials. Are there any additional materials? No. Any additions or deletions to the agenda? Public comment period. Any from the public like to speak? Seeing none, we'll move forward to City Council's comments. Any comments from the City Council? None?
I have just a point of order. Why are we having the mid-year budget report during the successor agency meeting and not during the regular City Council meeting?
Councilmember Termini, the reason why it's a joint hearing of both, this is a joint hearing between the successor agency and the city is because we will be recommending adjustments to both the successor agency and the city budgets.
Okay, sure. Sounds good. Okay. With that, we will proceed to general govern hearings. Fiscal year 2015-16 mid-year budget review. It's well.
Sure. Mayor members of council, the item before you is looking at our mid-year budget review, kind of looking at where we are currently in terms of revenue, our expenditures, and projecting where we see the city ending the fiscal year, as well as making a couple of budget adjustments. Just looking at some of our major revenue sources. City continues to show continued growth, continued slow growth. Over the past couple of years, the growth has been steady but at a slow pace. We don't see any signs of any of our indicators showing a recession anytime soon. We continue good growth in sales tax. It's about 4.7%. Our property tax, up 6.3. We're seeing really good growth in the transient occupancy tax. We're seeing increases in our parking revenues, so all of our indicators on tourism are increasing. We're seeing a decreasing in the parking citations. We believe that's related to the three-hour parking change. And all our other revenues are projecting very close to the budget, and we project that they're going to end the year right around where we budgeted. So when we look at our sales tax, it's continuing to grow. Our Bradley Burns, so the standard 1%, has increased 4.7% to date. We budgeted 2.5%. Our district tax, we have the two add-on quarter cent taxes, that's increasing at 2.1%. The difference between those two taxes are large auto sales are under the Bradley Burns, and customers who are buying autos locally at our dealerships but live in another area do not pay the district tax. And then another big factor in the difference is we have a local company that supplies products to outside agencies, outside of the city limits. Once again, it applies to Bradley Burns but not the add-on district taxes. We're recommending no changes at this time, even though we're above the budget projection. We have some concerns with the unwinding of the triple flip. It's mostly a cash flow issue. The state paid off the economic recovery bonds on June 30th of last year, causing our sales tax not to get to the full 1% until January, but for the period from July 1st through December 31st, we only received the 0.7%, the quarter percent reduction that then flipped through to the state, back down to schools, into the property tax to the city. That was restored January 1st, and that final six-month payment where we haven't received the quarter percent reduction, that'll come to us in August. It's projected to be about $700,000 to $900,000 currently. So we project that we'll receive, you know, a little bit above our budget estimate, but it's going to come later on, and we have reserves in the general fund that's covering our cash flow currently. Our property taxes are showing strong increases. We're at a 6.3% increase to date. Since we're paid that and 50% to date, we know that we're going to increase about 6.3% when all's said and done, so we're recommending a slight increase, about $58,000 in our property Our transient occupancy tax continues to be strong. To date, we're showing a 7.4% increase. We budgeted 2%. Looking at past performance, we're seeing pretty steady growth, pretty strong growth over the past couple of years. So we're recommending an increase in the budget by about $78,000, which is a 6.5% growth. One thing I should have mentioned earlier is we're very cautiously optimistic right now. We're showing good growth, but based on federal issues, the overall U.S. economy, we don't want to increase the revenue projections too much since we're not that confident in what the future holds. One of the big changes we're recommending at the mid-year is the first installment payment from the successor agency loan agreement. The Department of Finance approved our re-entered agreement in the amount of $618,000 with the ROPS 1516B, which covers the current period, January 1st through June 30th. That payment's $114,871. We'll see six installments of that, and the plan currently is to utilize that one-time revenue source yearly for one-time expenditures.
So that is considered one-time money? It fits into that criteria? That's how we're plugging it in?
Correct.
Okay, great.
So those cover our main revenue changes. We have some cleanup items. They total about $37,000. These are all just based on current trends that departments are showing. When it comes to expenditures, there's really two main changes. We have an increase in our legal costs of $60,000, and we have an increase in our capital improvement plan transfer of just under $174,000. That consists of the $114,000 from the successor agency going to the Rosedale paving project, $20,000 for the Hooper Stair engineering and possibly repairs, $20,000 for the Esplanade Park retaining wall, engineering and some repairs, and just under $19,000 for new parking meters. And then Steve Jasper will be updating the school project as well as the capital improvement changes.
So quickly, addressing the capital improvement expenditures, the first project that will be hitting the street will be the Rosedale area paving. This is a follow-up to the sewer project that went in there. With this project, we will be repaving Rosedale Avenue from Bay Avenue to Plum Street, and then also doing Alma Court, Rosedale Court, and Carl Lane. As you can see here, the project budget is slightly over $260,000. Plan preparation is complete. We do have plans and specs and are ready to go out on to bid on this, and the construction contract is estimated to be $226,000. We did, you can see the revenues or the funding sources, we had $87,000 originally in our budget. We're adding the $114,000 at this point, and we do receive $60,000, or will be receiving $60,000 from the sanitation district. The reason we're here, and this wasn't done as part of the sewer project, is the price we got from the contractor working for the county for the project. They came back to us with a bid of $340,000 to do this work, and we estimated it was $226,000. I couldn't justify giving them that work at that price. I think this is a better way to go. It's a little more than we had originally budgeted, I realize, but I think we will get a significant savings over trying to negotiate with that contractor at this point. Next slide, please. Hooper's Beach Stairs. So this is a first of our El Nino damage that occurred this year. As you can see, this, I think this is the day that the damage occurred, December 11th, 2015. You can see the bottom flight of stairs was taken out. Next slide, please. Here's a picture I took actually today. That bottom flight's completely missing at this point. So we're asking for a $20,000 transfer to do a structural review and prepare our plans for it. It turns out that first day I started here back in 2001, there was an item before the council to hire a contractor, to hire an engineer to go look at the structural integrity of the Hooper Beach Stairs. So I've actually contacted that firm. They're preparing us a proposal. That work was never completed. I think it became a funding question later on. So anyway, at this point, we estimate the cost to be $50,000 to $100,000. It really depends what kind of, not necessarily structural damage that we occurred at the storm, but additional structural damage has been, since the stairs have been there about 25 years now in that environment.
Steve, would it be worth it to look into doing a removable stairs from this landing down?
You know, because it's such a length and the height, I mean, I can ask them if there's a feasible way to put a removable stair in there.
If we have access from the beach, we could lift it out of there like we do our...
Maybe just for that last run.
Last run, yeah.
I'll talk to them about that. You know, this is the first time we've had this much damage to it. Sure, we've lost the bottom couple steps a couple times, but nothing to this extent in the past. Anyway, the city has initiated an insurance claim on this, and we'll be talking to them to see if any of these costs can be covered. Our second El Nino event, the tree that came down on January 19th in Esplanade Park. You can see one picture of the upper part of the tree, and then overhanging the wall and onto the beach there is the second part. Another picture I took today of the stump. So between where you can see that pile of dirt and on the other side of the stump is about 65 feet of retaining wall that was taken out as this tree came down. I have talked to a geotech. The reason we've left the stump there is we didn't want to further destabilize that hill until we had somebody look at it and make sure what we're doing is right. Their recommendation at this point, before we can get a wall built, is to leave that dirt that's kind of sloughed off there and is protecting the toe from further sloughing, is to leave that dirt there until we can get a wall built. So at this point, we will be removing the stump into the next couple of weeks. We're working with getting equipment up there is kind of proving difficult, but we're going to take care of that. Then we are going to fence off around that mound of dirt, make it safe, rebuild the handrail, and open at least that end of the park back up to the public.
Would that retaining wall go all the way down to where the wood wall is now? The new wall, see where the wood wall is coming this way?
Yeah, so I think we will add that into it. It's not the part that failed, but we will take it out and replace that wood wall. And then there's another portion of the wood wall closer to the bandstand. We'll probably try and get that replaced at the same time since we're going to have equipment up there.
Is the retaining wall on the other side of the tree? Are we evaluating the stability of that?
They'll reevaluate it. You know, it doesn't look, it's not deflecting right now at all. It's just how much we need to remove to make a good tie-in and things like that.
Great, okay, thank you.
So looking at it, again, we're asking for another $20,000 to start the process of geotechnical evaluations and repair problems. Our future costs, right now we're looking at about $10,000 to remove the rest of that tree. Like I said, that's scheduled to start within two weeks. We'll have about $2,000 of security fencing that we're going to put up. They'll probably be there for a good part of the spring and into the summer until we can get the wall built. Then we'll have another $10,000, and then the wall construction itself will be $75,000 to $140,000. Oh, the railing replacement, thank you.
Yes. Just a question. The history of that park, does it have anything to do with the old outflow? Because you have the vent underneath there. There's a vent pipe.
So that site, the upper portion used to be where the Capitol wastewater treatment plant actually was, and so it outflowed through there. When they abandoned the treatment plant that was there and put in the pump station, which is in the existing building now, this was converted into the lawn facility that we have now. So I think those walls were put in as part of that conversion. I don't think the walls were there as part of the wastewater treatment plant that was there. But the history of them, some of those walls are pretty old, so I'm not exactly sure. I think the wall actually down below may be pretty old.
Before that, the rock wall on there was the rock wall to the old Capitol Hotel. That hotel had a finger that went on top of that park. That's where it sat. It was a men's room. Lawn boy.
Steve, I heard you mention you thought that the upper area would be fenced off until summer?
It's going to, you know, we're going to have to look at whether we want to get in there and construct it this summer or not. It's going to, we're just starting the design process now. I don't know when we'll be, yeah.
I'm not trying to, my question is, we just talked about issuing our permits for the year, and I know that the car show uses that upper portion for some tent. Will that not be available? Should we...
The portion around that dirt mound, which you saw in the previous picture, will not be available.
Will not be available. So we need to just send that message that that upper area will not be available.
Right. The first half of it certainly will be, and the walkway down along the bottom will be. First half of the upper lawn.
So will it be the area as far as where the retaining wall is would be okay? The existing retaining wall? Or just...
Yeah, yeah.
So up to where the existing wall would be through the tent towards the bandstand? I know we can be flexible with that. Thank you for that.
And once again, we have initiated an insurance claim on that. They've actually looked at that and have agreed to some level of coverage once we figure out what the costs are.
Great.
So the last item on the CIP list was, we've been working with Soquel Union, Soquel Elementary Union School District on a child's or a school safety project. This is related to the $40,000 that are in an escrow account for safety improvements. We had proposed to them originally doing a series of radar speed signs around their Opel Cliff, our Jade Street park site. They came back to us and requested that we really look where a lot of, right now there's more pedestrian and automobile traffic, and that's around New Brighton Middle School. So we agreed to look at that. We have now come to an agreement with them. Their Board of Trustees has approved it to install a rapid flashing beacon at a crosswalk on Monterey Avenue, and then a radar speed sign on westbound Monterey Avenue. There is a speed sign already on eastbound Monterey Avenue, so we will do those. We've gotten a proposal from our signal maintenance company who installs these types of facilities and will maintain them for $32,800. At the Jade Street Opel Cliff site, we will be repaving the driveway that goes into the basketball court area, putting up some school signs, school warning signs that you see typically around schools, and then painting the crosswalk on Jade Street yellow. The total cost of this is $44,600. And as I said, the funding sources is $40,000 from the school district through their prior agreements, and we will be paying for the balance at $4,600 from the city's gas tax. This work is already ordered and should be, some of it, the old crosswalks may actually be in. The speed sign should be pretty quickly. The work on Monterey Avenue is probably six weeks out. That's what the kind of delivery time we're seeing on those pieces of equipment. I think that's it for my slides.
Question?
Not a question, but I think this is a great addition for school safety. Recently, I was at two meetings where school officials for the Soquel District were there, and they comment on how much they support, excuse me, appreciate the support of the police department in monitoring speeding on Monterey because they knew us from Capitol. And this right here, what you're doing is a great addition for safety for the school too. Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome. Thank you. Comments or questions? Okay, thank you, Steve.
So the other main change in the general fund, in terms of expenditures or our legal expenses, we're recommending a $60,000 increase to the legal expense budget. This graph kind of shows the difference between what is our general legal services. It's the green line, which you can see has stayed relatively steady since 2009, 10, until current. The orange line shows our special services, so outside legal advice. And as you can see, based on some litigation, we can have pretty large expenditures for legal services. We have some other general fund adjustments. They're pretty minor, more housekeeping items. They total about $57,000. Looking at our other funds, in the SLEF fund, we're recommending new body cameras for the parking enforcement and community service officers. That's a zero change to the fund we'll be taking from capital assets into their supplies account. We have a $15,000 increase in the Worf Fund for El Nino repairs. The Worf Fund has current fund balance that can cover that $15,000. In the general plan, we've reduced our consultant charge by $65,000, increasing our staff time charge by $20,000, so a net change of $45,000. In the general plan fund, we've increased our revenue in the home reuse and housing successor. We sent out some loan documents, letting everyone know their current loan balance. We've actually had some people come and pay off those loans, so we're recognizing the increase in revenue. And we're increasing our OPEB, our Other Post-Employment Benefit Contribution, by $15,000. We had an actuarial study just completed, which is recommending a $15,000 increase in our contribution. Just throwing up a financial forecast, taking into account slow but steady revenue growth. This doesn't take into account any type of recession. And this graph is kind of hard to see. It just shows that over time, the city's kind of grown at a steady pace, both in terms of revenue and expenditures. When we break it down and condense the range from $11.5 million to $15.5 million, you can kind of see more of the differences between revenue and expenditures. The current fiscal year, with all the changes in the fund balance recommendations, at the adopted budget, we're showing a negative impact to the fund balance at the end of the year. We're still projecting that we'll end with about a $300,000 to $400,000 general fund balance at the end of this fiscal year. Going into next fiscal year in a positive position. Just a couple notes on this chart. This chart does not include any transfers to the CIP or reserves. It includes the removal of Measure D at the end of 2017, as well as the paying off of our pension obligation bond in August of 2017. One thing to note is, looking at just steady growth in revenue, including our CalPERS unfunded liability payments, in about five years, our revenue and expenditures look to be about equal, and that, once again, doesn't include any type of capital improvement transfer or reserve transfers. So we would keep them at the levels they're at, but not be able to increase.
Looks like they're beginning to cross.
Yeah, so that is, this is obviously something we're going to focus on more in the long-term budget discussions, but I just, we both wanted to bring this to your attention and really call everyone's focus to this, is that looking ahead, when you look at the increases in CalPERS costs, and we look at the expiration of Measure D, and we look out multiple years, things get tighter and tighter as we look further out. So we'll have more discussions about that as we get into the budget cycle, but I think we're all going to have to put our thinking caps on because as we project out, it does look like things can be tight. And in addition, we're, you know, getting further and further away from our last economic downturn, and these things do tend to come in five- to seven-year cycles. And so you can imagine somewhere in there that we will see an economic downturn, and it'll put even more pressure on us.
And there's no CIP money going in? We're done with the measure all money? We're not allocating any extraordinary funds into that?
Right, right. So this, obviously, we're making the CIP allocations until we get here. The gap between revenue and expenditures you see in the next coming years is available for CIP allocations, but as it becomes no gap, it becomes no allocation.
Right, I got it.
So that actually ends the mid-year budget presentation, so be happy to answer any questions you guys have.
I have a question, Steve, if I could. Steve, can you give us an update on the Worf and how much we have in the Worf Fund right now, and how much we used already on the repairs that we've been doing?
The repairs that we did in this fiscal year?
Yes.
The only repairs we've done so far have been some remodeling to the bathrooms, and then repairs that we've done in-house to the water line and the sewer line that were broken, probably totaled $15,000 at the most. We will be doing a repair to the pile cap where we lost a piling to strengthen it so we can return the load-bearing capacity for vehicles to 10,000 pounds. We're going to be doing that next week. That's probably another couple thousand dollars. You know, I don't know the exact figure we have in reserves for the Worf Fund. It's probably around $70,000 to $80,000 that we have set aside for capital improvements on the Worf at this point. And, you know, our past, we've kind of kept that as close as we can and saved it up for a major piling replacement project. You know, as you mentioned, we are looking at trying to develop a 10-year plan improvements on the Worf, so that's something we'll be looking forward to.
When do you think that you would have something to bring to the council?
I anticipate that probably in about a month from now.
Okay. Okay. Are we, did we move money over to allocate for further engineering study on this project?
You know, we use some of our savings that we have in there to pay for what we had. And if we, you know, if that was to pay for the study that we're nearly complete, you know, if we're going to go and start preparing design documents or anything like that for the next phase, I'll ask for another allocation at that time.
So in April, we'll probably, we'll see the engineering report and recommendations?
Correct.
Okay?
Yep.
Great.
Thank you. Does that conclude your presentation? Any other questions? We need a motion on this item?
Yeah, we need a motion to approve the budget amendments.
Still move?
Second? A motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries you in.
I have one question.
Go ahead.
Those body cameras, that's not going to be, that's not going to be like those, it's probably going to be like those tasers where they all have them, even though there's only a few of them out there working at a time. Should we order like 25 body cameras? Sorry to give you a hard time about that, but you know what? We only have three or four or five people out there. We don't need 20 tasers for 20 officers, you know? But that's old history.
These are not tasers. These are...
I know, they're body cameras.
Yeah. All the sworn staff have been wearing them since July.
Do they all need their own, or can they share?
It's better they have their own.
Why?
This way it maintains the integrity of the unit. It's easier to track individual officers and the activities around their daily performance.
Okay, there's a good reason for it. Other people share cameras, share a lot of things.
They don't want to share liability.
It's been a really successful program, and the officers and the CSOs in the parking have embraced it, and it's been very successful for us.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Okay. Just a question with the additional cameras. How's that going to affect the maintenance and the program overall in terms of cost of the recording and stuff like that?
It's not going to affect it in such a way that it's downloaded and working with our vendor. We originally looked at it from, as far as our storage capacity, to include all the staff, so we originally purchased that to include all of them at the time. We wanted to make sure we got the sworn staff down first as far as the process and downloading, so if there was any hiccups with any of the equipment, we could identify them early on, and so it's been successful. And now we want to make sure that the rest of the staff is equipped with them as well.
So you've been playing for this the whole time?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks.
Mr. Mayor Counsel, I wanted to just share with you, there was a sort of somewhat humorous incident that involved the cameras here the other day that came in and really helps, I think, validate some of the reasons why we got the cameras. And just the other day, we got a claim from a woman who indicated that our officer had stolen her $10,000 Rolex. She'd been... She'd been, she met up with the police officers in Shadow Brook, and she'd been escorted from the establishment and came in the next day and said that her Rolex had been taken from her. And unfortunately, this was one of our newer officers who was relatively new to the beat, and we went and pulled back the camera, saw the footage, and right as you walked up to this woman, you could clearly see both arms, and you could clearly see no Rolex was around her wrist at that moment. I think Officer Young breathed a sigh of relief, I'm sure, upon hearing that news, but it does, it points to this, the constant sort of scrutiny that the officers are under, and having that visual verification that backs them up, and probably can help also in cases where issues do arise, is so important in this day and age.
Great story. And it stresses the importance of Mr. Young's only personal camera, because there's no question about, well, that wasn't the right camera used, somebody else had it. So, it's, each one of them is their own personal video.
Yes.
Wonderful. Was that both items? Or we, we have another item?
So, we do have another item tonight, and I understand the council may be relatively tired. So, what, what this is at this point is, this is the budget principles, and we try to do this every year at the mid-year to try to identify, get guidance from the council as staff goes back and prepares the annual budget and prepares the draft budget for you to review. So, nothing you do tonight is done by any stretch of the imagination. Really, what you do tonight is gives us, give us guidance that we will use to incorporate into the draft budget, so that when you see the draft budget, you can be confident that the items that you asked for will be there. So, I'm going to go through this, I'm going to go through it relatively quickly. There's a list of a lot of the kind of overarching, I think I talked about this, the overarching principles. We're going to start at a high level, talking about the overall principles that are in the budget. Probably, there's not a lot of change from year to year in those. Then, we'll talk about some of our accomplishments this next year, and then we can hear from the council about their objectives for the coming budget. So, we have overall budget principles, and as I said, these may or may not change very much year to year, talking about a balanced budget, talking about ensuring that we are planning for the loss of Measure D as we look out toward 2017, and that we're all paying attention and ensuring that our reserves are maintained at our policy levels. We also talk about organizational effectiveness within, within the city, making sure that we're always looking for opportunities to improve our performance. Key point that I think the council picked up on this evening is when we have one-time revenue, that we're making sure that it's being used for one-time expenditures, maintain transparency, and ensure until Measure D expires that the Measure O commitments, our Measure O funding is committed to reserves or capital projects. We also, obviously, in the city, place a high priority on our public safety and our police department, ensuring that's funded to a degree that's necessary, maintaining our infrastructure, and always trying to analyze how any service level increase that we may consider in the future will have an impact on our long-term decision-making and stability as a city. So, those are our overall principles. We've, they've remained relatively consistent year to year. They're intended to be at a high level and kind of guide the overall preparation of the budget. What we will do then is talk about some of the specific accomplishments for this last year, and then hear from the council, maybe about at a more project level, some of the things they'd like to see focused on for the coming year. So, are there any, is there any interest in talking about or changing any of the budget principles as we look forward to 2016, '17?
No, you have some open-ended statement, you know, statements here. We could tighten them up, but I don't want to, I don't want to wordsmith it, and, you know, when we get to these topics, we'll, we'll debate them, but I think they're general enough. We've discussed them before, unless people have anything they want to change at all.
They are general.
So, in terms of transparency, especially about fiscal matters, Mr. Finance Director, I had talked to you a little bit about some of the programs that are available that some communities around the state are using. I found this out through a convention that I've been at, at the California League of Cities, and you expressed that, that time, you were familiar with the program, but it's kind of expensive. And I was just wondering if there's other alternatives, and maybe you could talk a little bit about what I was bringing up with you, because I think in terms of the budget review and involving the public, so that the information is more easily understood by the public, okay? Not just line items, but forms that depict revenue, you know, things like that in, in pictorial ways, and a little bit more transparent in terms of understanding it. So, if you could comment on that, I appreciate it.
Sure. Mayor, Councilmember Richand, just so you know, in the last month or so, city manager and myself have had a demo with one of the vendors. Very, very attractive, as you mentioned. It shows financial data and graphical matters. The public can log into our website, drill down into all our transactions, you know, slice the pie however they want. In that discussion, we were informed they have what they call a transparency module, which is actually relatively inexpensive. And so, we're actually looking to try and implement that by the end of the fiscal year, if possible.
Thank you very much. That's just what I was looking for.
Any other input on the principles?
Look, read number, let's see, one, two, three, four, five, six. Read number six, see if you want to wordsmith that one. Look at that, there's a maintain and improve upon.
Yeah, clearly, there's a typo in that.
Yeah, there's a typo.
I think, I think the intent is transparency of city financial operations and overall access to city operations.
That's all.
I wasn't easy to solve that one.
Former English teacher. Can't help it.
That helps.
I taught school for six years.
I didn't know that.
Yeah, of course. What do you...
So, do you need a motion from us to adopt the principles?
I think that's the way I am.
I could give you the rule.
Why don't, why don't we get through this next piece, and then we can look at the principles and the objectives?
Okay.
So, this is going to drill down a little bit more, you know, focus a little bit more tangibly on specific projects. And first, I'm going to touch on some of the accomplishments during 15, '16, the current fiscal year that we're in. The planning department had, the community development department had a bit of a banner year in terms of getting our first climate action plan, a housing element update. We completed the conceptual library design, and we've got the draft of the zoning codes. They've got a lot of accomplishments. Police Department, as we mentioned, we will, by the end of this year at least, be, have the entire department out there with body cameras. We completed an outside audit on the use of force within the department, looking back at five years' worth of data. We obviously have the discussions about the village parking time limits, and we've improved our parking permit processes. Public Works, we completed the Phase 1 of the Period Park Project, did a lot of work preparing for El Nino and obviously responding to it, awarded the Esplanade and Stockton Avenue improvements, including the 38th Project. We completed the preliminary design risk for the park. On the more administrative side, we completed the comprehensive fee study. We moved to the Acela Agenda Management Meeting Software. The museum had a great exhibit, Postmark Capitola. Art and Cultural had, as usual, a very busy summer and last season with the Opera at the Beach and the new plein air events. And the credit card, I was downstairs the other day when the first credit card transaction took place down at the police department, which is an exciting day to step into the 20th century for us.
Great, when we get to the point where everyone in the world carried a credit card, that would be such a moment.
It will be such a moment, because I'll tell you, we, we actually just, our, our staff person, our parking enforcement officer who deals with maintaining the meters, has just signed up, gone off to join the National Guard, which is terrific that one of our own would want to be able to give back and serve our country. The problem, of course, is now that that means that we have a vacancy in the person that picks up the coins. And believe it or not, we still have a lot of coins to pick up, and they're heavy, and it, it is a thing that we have to manage still. Someday...
Where's Lou when you need him?
No. We're not going back there, okay? That was a resounding...
I woke up the back of the room.
Councilmember Turbin, we will...
Against opera? What's the matter with you?
We will continue to examine all the options to look at coin pickup. In addition, we're obviously not done with 15, '16 yet. There's a number of projects that we anticipate completing before the end of the fiscal year. It includes the Stockton Avenue Project, the 38th Avenue Paving Project, the McGregor Park Project. The trucks are moving on Monday, so you're going to see work out there at McGregor next week. We'll be looking at our green building ordinance update. We've got other planning items with getting the zoning code done. We're going to have our hearings on the skate park, which will be fun. You just appropriated funding to get rid of all of our old coin meters, so we'll be all credit card meters throughout the village, and then awarding the contract for Rispin. In addition, we'll have the park and the Monterey Avenue paving projects that we want to have awarded before the end of the year. The Wharf Assessment, which we just spent some time talking about, we're looking at credit cards up here upstairs as well, and we're going to be going to junior guard registration for this season for the first time, doing it online. So, those are some of the other accomplishments that we'll be hitting before the end of the year. So, now the time is for the council, if there's specific items that you'd like to see us focus on as we prepare this year's agenda, excuse me, budget. Now, you know, obviously, whatever, anything you mention tonight is going to have to come through budget hearings, but it's a good opportunity if there's a specific focus or a thing that you think you would like to call out and see whether there's support from your other members to see in the budget.
Yeah, something on some of the accomplishments. Maybe it's not enough time to do that right now, because we've already gone through it, but in years coming up, I'd like to have part of your slide dealing with the various committees that contribute so much to Capitola here. So, there's the Art and Cultural Commission, there's the Financial Advisory Commission, there's the Council on the Environment, there's the Parking Commission. So, there's a lot of groups here, and soon to be the Library, maybe that's not official, but I think they contribute a lot to Capitola. I think they helped make Capitola what it is, and I think it would be very appropriate to recognize the efforts they put in. And I don't know if that fits into the agenda, but if the board supports me, I think that should be part of this presentation.
By way of recognizing, what about the annual dinner that we have? Will we bring...
I don't mean the annual dinner, we do that, that's correct. And they all know they're recognized, but this is sort of an official report to the board, and it's sort of a roll-up of many different things. And as part of that roll-up, I'd like to see a mention of the various commissions and committees that contribute so much to Capitola.
If that's a priority, we can certainly do that. I, you know, I, we always will list... No, well, you're mentioning things that have been accomplished, and, you know, that's, staff time went into accomplishing those, and also citizens, you know, participated in that. So, it did take, you know, some of our general fund to accomplish these things, so I thought that was an appropriate thing. If it doesn't fit in, fine, I just want to recognize that as an accomplishment. You just want them to be listed in the accomplishments of the, could it be sufficient to say accomplishments of these committees? Yeah, the things that they work on, and, I mean, they put in so much effort. Would that be difficult to extrude?
No, that wouldn't be difficult. I mean, I think, you know, I'll remind the council that in the budget every year, we put a lot more focus, I think, on the accomplishments, and there's a more exhaustive list. This was a relatively abridged list that I went through relatively quickly. So, I think, you know, maybe what Councilmember Richand is asking about is when you do look at the overall budget, we'll have several pages that kind of outline some of the key things that got done. And, for example, the Commission on the Environment will have hopefully gotten done, the Period Park Habitat Enhancement Project, and that would be identified there in those accomplishments.
Things of that nature would be good to highlight. That, I think that's the point.
You know, I, I do, I do fear a little bit that our poor finance advisory committee might feel a little left out, because, you know, they do tend to have more of an administrative role, and they don't get the same sexy projects that they get out of Art and Cultural, but we might be able to find some other accomplishments as well.
They could just say that they increased our, our emergency fund from X to Y, and, you know, they are making accomplishments.
Oh, they absolutely are.
They have put aside more money since I got on this council, so, and that's a credit to them to not giving it, not allocating it to us to spend.
Yeah, because I, I don't, and I don't think anyone up here takes for granted, and I'm sure the administration doesn't take for granted, the amount of work the citizen committees in this city, Capitola, do. And so, I just want to have as many times as possible to recognize it. Thanks.
Councilman Norton, you had a concern?
Yes, two things. One is, I think it would be a great accomplishment this next year if we can complete and get approved our general plan and our zoning ordinance within the next year. The second thing is, is that I think that we need to direct our attention towards the Wharf, both financially and physically, what we're going to do with it. And so, I'm hoping that's added to that list.
Well, it's, it's evident that sooner or later, we're going to have to have a serious conversation about the Wharf. But those two green lines that were collapsing at each other, I don't know how we do that. But I, I, as I watched the video, and we all saw the video of the Wharf getting pounded...
It comes up every four, or five, or six, or seven years.
Sure. You know, it's just when you sit there and you watch it take the beating, you just wonder, you know, is this going to be the wave that's going to do it, you know?
Well, it was rebuilt. It was, part, half of it was broken off before. Remember, there was that old story about Harry Hooper throwing the baseball to, with some sort of a life raft over to the person over there to rescue him, when part of it did break? I mean, there's lots of stories going on.
I think we should reserve all comment. Will all the council members look at the assessment report that Dennis and I looked at?
Yeah.
It's four or five years from no longer being there, period.
Yeah.
If you're willing to accept that, then we don't have to talk about the Wharf anymore.
And I think another part of that discussion should be, you know, just based on that point, is, is it better to take, you know, preventative steps to save the Wharf, or just to wait for it to get annihilated and discuss probably forever rebuilding it, which may, would never happen? So, I mean, I think, Dennis, I think the point I'm taking is, we need to have a serious conversation about what is the city, this council, the city, this council, what is the commitment to that resource?
If we make a financial commitment, we can find outside agencies that'll join in with us. That's too valuable for a community. And if Steve's bringing this thing up back to us in April, good start.
I think it's just, I think it's on there, I think we all, we want to have a serious discussion about funding and saving the Wharf.
Yeah, and I certainly want to preserve it. I mean, I may make, you know, derogatory remarks or about, about, about that, but it's, it's very popular in Capitola, very popular in Capitola. And when we did the general plan 20 years, 15 years ago, and we asked people what they liked about Capitola, one of the things they said was the Wharf. And then they said, when was the last time you were out there? People don't go out there that much, but they love it. So, you know, it's, and that hasn't changed over the years, and I don't think it will change, that it's visually and just part of the charm, and so we do need to work on it.
One of the things I hate the most about the Wharf is because, in fact, my wife and I like to walk out there, and I don't know when the darn gate closes. So, we made it there, and the gate is closed, and, so, I love the Wharf, and it's like a lot of things in this county, like the rail. If the rail's gone, we're going to miss it, you know? If the, if the Wharf is gone, we're going to miss it.
How'd you get there?
Excuse me?
How'd you get over, you climb over it?
I would never climb over the fence. I don't think I'm going to say anything.
Okay, well, are we unanimous on that concern about the Wharf feature?
Of course. Of course. I have two items.
Go ahead.
I would like us to think about putting some money aside from, from former RDA housing rehab monies, a little bit of money, so that if at some point that we have a need for, I told you before about the Housing Authority owns some apartments on 46th or so, and they came to us years ago, and they said, you know, we really don't have enough, you know, we don't have money for things, you know, we need a new roof, would you help us out? We gave them money for a new roof. There may be a time when somebody may come to us like that in the community for some housing rehab, even business rehab, that needs $1,000 or $2,000. San Cruz has had, and other communities have had, very successful programs in providing those kind of funds, small amount of funds, for people to put a new sign up, paint the place, get some landscaping, make it look sharp. Well, they don't, we don't have those funds anymore. So, I don't know if there's any way we can be creative, but just something for us to think about, so that if we see a need, which I see a need, in Golden Age Nursing Home, I would love to give them a grant of $1,000 and get a landscaper in there and fix their landscaping and paint the building. And there's a few other places around town, you know, if we could, you know, set aside $10,000 bucks and give $1,000 or $2,000, small grants to any of these people, it would be wonderful. It would be wonderful. Paint, please paint your building, please.
You know, Habitat for Humanity has a program out now that, if you have a house and you you would like to build a secondary unit, they will help you build it. We could, that's a place that we can participate financially, help them financially come up with money and allow somebody who could move out of their main house and move into a back house as a secondary unit and help, help create affordable housing that way where there's existing loss. The biggest problem for the housing is buying the land or finding the land. But within our ordinance, we have the mechanism, if the lot is large enough already, to allow for a secondary unit. If we had some cooperation from the water department.
Maybe, maybe could we do the housing rehab?
All we have to do is come up, help them out by giving them the seventeen thousand dollars it costs them for a water meter.
There you go.
Well, you know, like the housing rehab program for the mobile homes where they get the small loans and they have to pay them back low-interest loans. Why couldn't we do that with some little businesses that maybe are some, I don't know, it's just something for all of us to think about, to see if there's any way we could ever free up a little bit of money and it would make that kind of, that small amount would make a big improvement in some place that needs that kind of improvement, it would really help our community. And the other thing is to have a line item on ADA things. I know ADA overlaps a lot of different things, but at least if we have it there, we'll look at it and we can say, okay, that project number forty-one on the CIP that we're going to do this year, that's an ADA project. We've done it. Just to pay attention, just to have it there to keep it, keep our focus on it so that we know we're doing something in that area. And we're already, we're already doing it in, you know, in Public Works and all of that, but just to, it's somehow have some little paragraph or something there so that then we can look at it every year and say, okay, what did we, what did we do for that? You know, there'd be some little things and there may be some, but that reminds me, could, have we done a story on, in the Sentinel on the Rispin project and the ADA project there? If we haven't, we should write up that story. Sorry to give you any more work, but we should write it up and give it to the Sentinel. Because that's, 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 that's a good public project. It shows that we're, we're spending public money, we care about this, we've got a new pathway, come on and check it out with a nice picture. Let's, you know, show the public what we're doing. Because when you look at this list of things that we've done, you know, I look at services, I look at what are we doing for the community? All these things are wonderful, but what have we done? We did that path and that's great and I see people using it and they're really happy with it. So let's, let's get a graphic and a picture and a little story and get some, get some good publicity for that. That's all for now.
That's great. That's great. Anything else?
John? Yeah. Yeah, I was listening to Mark talking about how we're projecting revenues based on the surrounding or the larger economic climate and you're right. You know, the things that I'm reading right now indicate, they even give percentages, three years from now is, is better than fifty percent, we're going to be in a recession. So it's kind of disquieting. One thing that I've talked about a number of times, especially when I was running for city council, is to revive the Economic Development Commission or Committee. It was a joint committee with the Chamber, you know, I don't think that's in the mix. You know, obviously they would participate, but I think it's something that we should drive ourselves, quite frankly. And I'd like to see that revived, that effort revived. Of course, I'd like to participate in that. I was part of the original one. I think something to consider, it was reminded to me, we may not have much sway in this regard, but, you know, Molly wrote an article, Martin wrote an article about the mall. And that's a major driver in this community, as we all know. And that's not doing very well and if there's a recession, I don't think it's, don't even do as well as it's doing right now. So we sort of have to think about what this community is going to be involved in to try to offset some of these forces, economic forces. I prefer to be involved ahead of the game than to respond after things have hit us. So that's another reason why I'm asking for this commission to start up again. And you have to start somewhere, otherwise we have no choice. Thank you.
Anything else? Do we need a motion to adopt these two?
So I took down all the items that I heard and if that's, if this is the list, then this is what we will, we will obviously include other objectives for some other projects that we have identified, you know, in the CIP, as well as the principles that we went through earlier. But if this is your council's wish, then I'd recommend making a motion and a second and taking a vote and giving staff direction.
So move.